Goodbye, the United States of America. In tribute to Father, for which His sins, one nation is one and God, in the will of His will, liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have both audio and video. Anybody can call me. Thank you. Before I get started, I just want to take a couple of seconds. You know, this board has always tried to continue with comments and concerns, but we seem to be, every time I end up recognizing somebody, we seem to get off track. At the last selectmen's meeting, we had a couple of individuals that spoke out of turn, and I just want to make sure that I know there were some people that took offense to that, and it was never the intent of this board to have anybody thrown under the bus like that. But you know the individuals we're dealing with, so if anybody took offense to that, believe me, it was not the intention of the board. I have always tried to extend the courtesy of recognizing the public, but we seem to get off track every time I go down that road. If anybody took offense, especially Mr. Spirakovsky, believe me, it wasn't intentional. John, let's go down to minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the minutes from the open session meeting held on October 30th, 2018.
I'll go in favor.
Correspondence. The office received the fire chief's monthly report for the month ending October 2018, as well as the police chief's monthly reports for August, September, and October. CERT, emergency management, also submitted their monthly report for October 2018. Two, as a reminder, this is an important one. The townwide parking ban begins tonight and runs through April 1st. There is no parking allowed on any street between midnight and 6:00 a.m. Parking in the downtown Warren area will run from 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. In addition, no person, no other person other than an employee of the services of Town of Warren or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts shall pile, push, or plow snow or ice onto or across a public way, street or roadway, and is subject to fines in accordance with Article 9 of the Warren General, Town Warren General bylaws. And is it correspondence?
Let's get down to West Warren Public Laboratory and see if we can find day of limitations. I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the special license for Friday, December 14th, 2018, in the Warren Senior Centers for the Warren, West Warren Public Laboratory Fund.
Any discretion?
No.
Here we go. I'm in favor. Okay. Look, I'm going to go down to number seven, since we have a public hearing scheduled at 7:15. I have a couple of comments. First of all, when I first went out to put the bids, the first two bids that we got were over the limit for the whole budget for the entire project. That, knowing that it was going to come back with more money than we needed, there was no sense for us to spend the money to advertise that's required by law. So I went, the paving itself is $15,000, plus or minus, but you have to understand that prior to putting the pavement down, there is still site work to be done, there is still the striping and signage to be done, adding a light to the pole in the corner that's already preexisting, so we can get some light on that thing. And there should be some sort of a fence or some sort of barrier between the proposed parking lot and the water department building, because the way it is now, people come in and they park right against the building, and that is illegal right away, and the water department has to have access down that right away at the back of their building, so they can get your equipment out. That's an additional cost. So I went and I sat there and I said, "Well, I'll see if I can split the bid." Splitting the bid is illegal. So I went down and just recently, I have tried desperately to try and find somebody to get down here and put a course of binder down for the winter. I have three people out there. I've heard back from two. I'm still waiting for one, which I don't know till tomorrow. So as it stands right now, that's where we are with the parking lot. If we get something that comes in tomorrow, the board of selectmen has an executive session posted for Monday evening in the selectmen's office for some, a meeting with town council, and if it's possible at that time, we will sign it and get something down here for the winter. But unfortunately, it's not working out the way I had hoped it did, but that's where we are. We got in that party right now. So by Monday, I will know the A and A, if we could do anything this year with that property. That's just FYI for everybody's information. If I go and anything else, if you try to do the package one, we're going to end up having to sit down, and there's probably going to be another few, a couple thousand dollars that may have to be added to that project, because one of the things I have always tried to do is, if we're going to do this, we just had Warren, West Warren, all redone, let's make this a project that we can be proud of, instead of trying to do it quickly and get it done and having it done half-assed, which we seem to have a habit of doing at times in this town. That's where that is now. I will have an answer for everybody on Monday, but that's where that project stands as of today. I don't want to start you, Tom. I don't want to start the audit. How about number 10? Town date meeting. We have tentatively put it on the schedule for January 17th. I talked to the clerk today and with Mr. Sarah. Everybody is in, on board for that day, although the moderator right now, Mr. McCarty, is traveling. From what I understand, he'll be back this weekend, and he's good for that day. Because I was going to say, if that's the only person, we could always get somebody to step in for that. So unless there's any further discussion, is the 17th, if everybody can hear a vote.
On 17th, I mean, we're waiting on the school to vote tonight. The school department votes that we need to borrow money or we're seeking funding for the mold remediation, the mold issue at the elementary school, then that would force us into a special within 60 days. So it can be, that's basically 60 days from tomorrow or Friday or Saturday.
Your meeting's Monday, right?
Me, tonight.
Brett told us it's the 19th.
He told us it was tonight, that they were going to click a vote. I thought.
Monday. The school committee meeting's Monday.
So when does? I think it has to be minimum 60 days?
Sure.
From when they take their vote and notify us. So if it's Monday. When is the?
Monday, 19th.
It's close.
Yeah.
It's close. So somewhere around there, I guess. So I guess Joyce needs to hear that also, with regards to solar, January 17th is kind of what we're looking at for a special day.
And you know, everybody has to be aware that, you know, there is requirements before the town meeting that, you know, the people that want to present the articles have to have them early enough, so we can send them to council, make sure that we don't go through this whole process, and there's something legally that's going to end up kicking it back out from the attorney general. So people, please be aware that if we shoot for January 17th, you know, you have to get started now to get your articles written, so we can get everything over to the town council, so if we do have the meeting.
So what would that deadline be marked for that?
Around Christmas, maybe two weeks prior?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Prior to Christmas, preferably the week, or probably around the 13th to the 20th, somewhere in that range.
Of December?
Yep.
No, yes, December. Not until January.
Review them and see what we're going to do.
Because one of the issues I'll be addressing at this upcoming meeting is exactly that. You had the issue with the wording.
Right.
And the money's there, but you can't access it, because it literally wasn't worded right in the motion on the floor. That's why what, you know, Congress in this situation, we had, you know, easy now. So we want to make sure that everybody has their articles in, and we do send it to council for their review, so if there has to be any changes made, make sure that it does pass, that we do meet the deadlines. So I guess we're on board for the 17th? John, prepare your watch and invoices.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, I motion to approve the payroll warrant number 37, the amount of $42,421.78, and vendor warrant number 38 for $163,055.57 dated 11/5/2018.
Second. I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Also, we have warrant number 39, the amount of $46,653.03 for payroll, and warrant number 40 for $75,468.38 dated 11/12/2018.
Second.
I'm in favor.
All right. Aye. Drawdowns, some other invoices. Fiscal year 17, CBBG drawdown, grant number 813, PVPC is P E for $13,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Speak for the board.
Go ahead, John.
I'd just like to reach out to the dispatchers that served the community for the last 20 so years, some of them. Thank them for their service and all the best in their upcoming endeavors. So just want to reach out. Am I supposed to speak for everybody here?
Yes, you do. I know it was a very challenging experience for some of the individuals involved, but this is something that the state is pushing, and one way or the other, we're going to be forced to go down that road, and I think it left us in the driver's seat as opposed to being ordered. So I think it's simply working out pretty well, Adam and Chief.
Absolutely.
Very good. Okay, 7:15. Tax classification. Assessors, you're up.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Folks here this evening and the board. The assessors are here this evening to provide you with the FY19 tax information and answer questions, so you can vote on the four possible tax policy options. The single or split rate, the open space discount, the residential exemption, and the small commercial exemption. Those are the four. Within your package that the select people have, you will find information on the town's budget, property values, the estimated levy, and the four different tax rate options available to you. The final DOR approved valuation of all property in Warren for FY19 is $384,220,294. Many residential properties did see a slight increase in value. The increases were warranted in order for us to maintain full fair cash value based on recent arms-length sales. DOR has approved Warren's new growth for FY19 at $91,347. The estimated tax levy for FY19 is $6,919,807.48, which is below the maximum allowable If you vote on a single tax rate and the DOR approves the tax levy figure, this will result in a tax rate for all real and personal property of $18 per thousand, using a residential factor of one. This will be an increase of 68 cents per thousand from last year. If you vote for the split rate, using the minimum residential factor, the tax rate for residential property will be $16.22 per thousand, and for the commercial industrial personal property and chapter land, $27 per thousand. It is the opinion of the assessors that option two, three, and four are not an appropriate, are not, excuse me, an appropriate fit for the small community of Warren. We have explained this in further detail on pages four and five of your handouts. Thank you.
Mr. Nardi.
Okay, so I don't have a question, just a statement to make. You know, this goes back to the Maytown meeting, folks. I mean, this increase, it's great to see your property values increase, 4.9% on, my home is a single family ranch. In doing the math with my property and that increase, I'm going to see a $253 increase to my taxes next year. That's me on a small ranch of 1,100 square feet. You know, it varies for other properties, but what you spend in May, you pay for in January. So when the school department comes before you, and I can't emphasize this enough, we're required to give them a local contribution. Our requirement is set by the state of Mass. I remind you people this every year, the above minimum contribution is the amount that generally affects us the most. That's the amount that we're always arguing over, how much extra we're going to give them to fund the schools. Select board voted, it was $392,000 above minimum last year. It was amended on the floor to a half million dollars. Every hundred thousand dollars adds a quarter to this tax rate. So that quarter, along with, let's say, Tom's citizen's petition at $25,000, we're at about 32 cents, added into this 68 cents increase. Those things are a direct impact on what the assessors are presenting to us today. Doesn't seem like a lot in May, and then people come out and they say, you know, "We need this, we need to have this money." The school department makes their pitch, but then when I go to dump, I go to post office, sometime in January when the tax bills come out, people aren't happy. So again, what you spend in May is a direct reflection of what this is going to be. This is another increase. Last year wasn't substantial. We had minimal new growth. I mean, it was $91,000 or whatever the number was.
Substantially lower than last year.
Than last year, which was a huge impact. It's great to see our property values going up, but when that rate goes up per thousand and your property values go up, expect to pay more. And that's all I had to say about it, sir. It's just, you know, it's going to be an increase for people. And now we have the school department before us, looking for a quarter, $250,000 roughly, for the mold remediation at the elementary school, the high school. I have people asking for money for the town hall. We need windows in the police station on the first floor. We have other buildings to take care of, but we generally keep funneling the money up the hill or neglecting a lot of other things in town. So we're either really going to start to pay to address these issues that are going to come up, and I'll sooner or later become mandates for us to have to start fixing these things. So we have to make a decision. We're either, we're not bringing in this commercial business that we would like to see. I know former selectman Gagin was working hard on a lot of things, but we're a bedroom community, and taxpayers are going to foot the bill. I mean, I'm not happy with the increase to Mass with that, but I kind of called it in May. I knew we were going to be at an increase, and it's a little more than I thought, but it is what it is, folks. This is what it is. And a two-tier tax rate is not an equation for this town, not at all. I mean, it looks good. It'll lower the residential factor, but it's going to kill the business factor, so we're not okay for that.
Literally kill. You will have no reason.
All I have to add, folks, is remember this come May of 2019 when we vote.
Pretty much looking at option 1A, the single rate.
I mean, that's, since I've been on here, I don't think we've ever, ever done the thing. We just don't have the commercial base to justify it. To sit there, and you know, pretty much everybody in this room will get a little bit of a break, but the people that do own businesses are going to pay for that inconvenience.
Based on our demographics, Mr. Chair, it's a short-term gain for a long-term problem. If you voted for a two-tier tax rate, these businesses are going to leave. What little bit of pizza shops, bars, and things like that are going to say, "Forget this, folks, I can't pay this." They're going to be gone. Then it'll be more of an impact to us down the road. It's just like using money from free cash to put it towards the tax rate. It's great for a year, but it catches up to the following year. You know, you just can't keep doing it. So we've gotten out of that habit, but now we're here, and when we spend, we're going to pack, unfortunately. So everybody's aware of where they'll be next year and expect to see an increase.
So I guess that leaves us basically with a...
Vote to accept.
I vote to accept number one option on the recommendations of assessors in conversation between this board.
I'll make a motion to accept the assessors' recommendation for a single-tier tax rate for the Town of Warren for FY19, the amount of $18 per thousand.
Second. No further discussion, all in favor? Aye.
I think legally, I'm supposed to get a motion on the other options, saying that you don't want to do those, if you, if we can, just for the record.
That could be.
We can. We can make a motion to approve this, and then we'll, we can make a motion to not approve the other, but we'll take the motion to approve this rate, which was second, right?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye. And then I'll make a motion not to approve option 1B, excuse me, option 1B, option 1C, we, sorry. Excuse me, option 2. Rachel, I'm sorry. We're going with 1B, 2, 3, and 4, correct?
Yes, correct.
I'll make a motion not to accept option 1B, option 2, open space discount, option 3, residential exemption, excuse me, and option 4, small commercial exemption.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, folks.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Tom. Yes. So I'm here tonight. It's been an ongoing issue, been well-known for the past several months, that the town loader has pretty much failed. The loader has, it's a 1996, it has over 12,000 hours on it, and it's time to be replaced. Unfortunately, it's at the point right now where it's unusable, because there's a leak in the engine that is causing antifreeze to get into the oil.
Let me, just FYI, you know, I know that this has been, the discussion has been ongoing, and just for the residents and the folks that are watching here, that this was something that was known to the board, but we were quite hoping that this piece of equipment was going to make it to the Maytown meeting. That's why there wasn't a lot of discussion prior to this. Unfortunately, it's not. So we're in the situation that we are now. So what do you want to do?
I would recommend, based on some new figures that I've gotten with in regards to rentals, that I've been talking about with the different committees, and the result is, there's a couple of different, different options. We can either go ahead and purchase one now and probably get the best price we can, or we do what needs to be done to rent one for the winter and then put it on, on the annual town meeting.
What is the purpose of the loader, Tom? Is it to fill the sanders, to fill sand and salt?
The loader pretty much fills the sanders with, with salt. In bigger storms, it is used for plowing purposes up on coal hills. It's not uncommon at all in the rain conditions to get four or five foot snow drips across the road. Can't do it with a truck. It's used for snow removal in the downtown areas. It's the most vital piece of equipment I have at all the time, hands down.
My understanding, that we were looking at trading this in about a year and a half ago, for about $30,000.
Talked about, yes.
Capital's radar, correct?
Correct.
We, you decided to pass it after the mower last year, correct? The mower became more important?
I, the mower became more important, because there was no issues with the loader, and I didn't have a mower.
So now, to go ahead and rent or lease something at a cost of how much a month? Did you miss that?
If we were to go ahead with a purchase agreement, until we could get stuff finalized at a meeting that was talked about in January, it was $2,500 a month. Because it's a long-term rental, and there's no commitment on our part to get approval for this, it's now gone to $4,400 a month.
So you do understand we can't commit to anything until the voters vote on a purchase like that? Preferably, like to have capital weighing on it, and then even if it is an article brought for the town, townspeople have to vote for that amount, because we just can't buy it now. So we wouldn't be able to make the commitment, even if it was on until January 17th. So we're looking at probably $4,400 a month for now, just to get you going.
Right. Unfortunately, yeah.
And I know we have finance here. How are we planning on paying that rental?
Well, initially, the rental agreement was $2,500, not $4,400.
Yeah, we just heard that figure today.
So that makes it a little bit different, in our opinion, probably.
So initially, what was the thought process when it was 25?
Originally, we were, we had voted to give Tom $2,500 to get him through that special town meeting per month, and then an article would have to be written for him to either request the balance for said rental and/or put an article on the floor to purchase the machinery.
So you have reserve account transfer?
It was via rat.
Rat from Think Hub?
Yes.
So there's no way of contracting a contractor with a, with a loader to work for us, or is that an option?
It's an option, if I can find someone to do it in the middle of November.
Just throwing it out there, curious, because it just seems like an awful lot, $4,400, we don't even know if we can buy the machine. Would that money come off of that machine if we chose to buy it?
Right. And just an example, yes, it would, it would come off it, and there's...
Do you have that written?
I do.
So as we rent, just so I have this clear, as we rent this, lease this item $4,400 a month, in four or five months, they're going to take $12,000 to $16,000 off?
A portion of the rental would go towards the purchase, not the full amount.
Or it's a portion.
Yeah, what's a portion?
A portion.
Or they just gave you something in writing, standing up, portion would come off, then? They didn't give us an amount?
I don't have, I don't believe I have an amount from the contractor that I'm looking for, but I did look at, I did find out about another used one, and that was used, it's in good condition, it's $105,000, it's got quite a few hours on it, and that rental rate was $5,500, and then the rental credit on that $5,500 was based on a per-month basis. So out of the $5,500, $1,000 of that was deducted towards the, towards the unit.
So a third.
So at the end of four months would get me to April. So the rent paid would have been $22,000, which would have brought down the purchase, the rental credit would have been 18. So $4,000 of that we would lose with this particular person.
We would, we would be able to put towards the purchase of that $4,000.
We rented eight, we rented, we put $22,000 towards rental, 18 of it would go towards the purchase. But that's this person, not this is a...
That's a used one.
That's a used.
Hundred and five.
What is the cost of the new one, Tom?
Excuse me?
What's the cost of the new ones you've been looking at?
Right around a hundred and fifty-one.
A hundred and fifty-one for new, and how much for used?
This is a hundred and five. It was lightly, it's, it was used in a wood chipping operation, from what I understand, so it was basically idle working as far as the loader goes, but it's got eight thousand hours on it, so it's...
So four thousand less than what you have on your vehicle right now, that's...
Pretty much shot.
Just saw a caught up speed, so about a year and a half ago, we were hoping to get a thirty thousand dollar trade on the loader that we currently have, correct?
Correct.
Which would go against the one fifty for a new, and at a cost to the town of one twenty. But we passed on that, and now we're into probably spending, in my estimates, a hundred and eighty thousand between rentals and a new piece of equipment that we could have taken care of a year ago.
Well, we could have taken a lot of stuff, a lot of time ago, if stuff was done.
But that was the one you wanted before the mower, Tom. So, I mean, I sat there in your office with Ash and...
Mr. Nardi, let's, let's get something straight here, okay?
You wanted it, you did.
Right, I did want it.
And then the mower became priority, a twenty-five thousand dollar lawnmower, you put a citizen's petition out that you got, and now we're stuck.
Because there was a loader that was...
There was no planning, everything is reactive, nothing's planned.
How is it reactive?
You just react to the changing environment, this breaks, I need something.
I've been submitting to capital planner for the past four years to purchase a loader each twenty-two years.
And a lot of what we've done to establish capital planning, put money there, and they were on pace to purchase this.
That's right, and I was very excited to meet with capital planning.
And you said, no, I want the mower instead.
Correct, because at the time when the mower came up, there was nothing wrong with the loader. In all of my capital planning requests, a loader was scheduled to be purchased in twenty-twenty, and that goes back to FY sixteen. So in FY sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, I have to purchase a loader in FY twenty-twenty. The mower came up because I had no mower to mow the sides of the road. The loader at that time was fine. So if...
Well, we know we need to...
Individuals, one place blame on me.
It's all departments, we're trying to get ahead, so we established capital, we tried to get this reestablished, we put money on a stabilization account, we're trying, I think the chairperson and other members are doing a good job at outlining capital plans. Adam's got something, three, four, or five years planned out there, saving for it.
I would agree.
Some departments do it better, some departments don't. I'm not gonna criticize you for that, but it's just, these things are hard to swell, and if it doesn't get approved, Tom, we're in trouble, because now you're renting, renting, renting at a huge cost to the town. There's no guarantees that the town's gonna turn...
Is that my fault that we're renting, renting, renting?
Well, you need it, we could have addressed this, I'm saying. I mean, we had good value, thirty thousand dollars for that piece of equipment, you said, gotta trade it.
Right, because when we were looking at it...
Useful life was pretty much, it was getting old, we needed to replace it, you admitted it.
Right, I still admit it.
Okay.
I've been submitted for the life of the lawnmower, too, that died.
But we also had the co-op to help with that, with the mower.
To a point.
I, I just hope, I don't even know if it'll be on a special time, I don't know what the board's decision's gonna be, anyway, if it does go on, if it doesn't pass, it's just gonna be a huge cost, because you're gonna need something. And, and I don't know. Either it's gonna be raised inappropriate, or go against the tax rate next year, we just got done setting the tax rate, uh, we may be borrowing.
I mean, you can, you can put the blame on me all you want, Mr. Nardi, I've been submitting my capital requests, the boards have changed, I was very excited to meet with it.
No, I understand that, Tom, I understand that, but...
I was excited to meet with our chairman, with the capital planning.
You just said, you admitted, you put the mower before it. The board changes, members change, I change, they change, but the constant is, is we need to continually get new equipment, and we need to replace equipment, we need to get good value for our equipment that's there. I don't wanna be the guy, and I'm not penalizing you for this, Tom, I don't wanna be the guy that's always looking for used. Why can't we be the other guy selling our used equipment and replacing with new, let somebody else buy our maybe potential headaches? That's the, what I would like to see our town do.
That'd be great, sure.
We buy old, used, and we're never getting the useful life out of it, it's just, it's, we're not getting any warranties, it's, you know, I'd rather spend the money now to, to be in a better position down the road.
I would too, but there was, there was no way when I was going after this mower that I knew that the loader was gonna die. I mean, I got, I could point you at any piece of equipment in that garage that's old, it could die tomorrow. I got a truck up there right now with a blown rear end.
I said I could die tomorrow.
Hmm? Excuse me?
I said I could die tomorrow.
Right, there's no knowing. So, I mean, it's, I feel I'm getting a lot of blame on stuff because I changed my mind to go to this mower from the loader.
So for me personally, I am leaning for that, speak for myself, I wish you would just stay committed to what you want, that's all I ask. If you, I know better deals are gonna come down the road, Tom, but you gotta stop being tempted by the apple and bite on that, and just stay focused on what you want, and capital will pledge to get you what you need, we'll pledge to vacuum on these things and start producing and getting them for you. It's just when you continually change, it's like, oh, God, who are we changing to now? I just wish you would stay consistent and say, this is what I want, I'm committed to it, and don't change, that's all that I ask.
I've been consistent to the point that I've been consistent on trying to get this equipment to stay together. The last large truck this town bought, brand new for the highway department, is an O-three. Okay, the last big truck is an O-seven, now it's purchased used. Anyone that's been up to the garage can tell you the equipment is getting old. I cannot control what's happened to the equipment. The mower we had was a nineteen ninety-six. It had seen its day, it was done. This mower that I purchased is gonna go, should go four or five years, will it? I don't know, it could blow up the next time we go out there. But by purchasing this mower, I was able to kick back other large purchases to save for some other stuff. A sweeper is on the agenda, it's been on there for a little while, the loader's been on there for a little while, the backhoe is starting to get old. I'm doing everything I can with the money that I get to preserve and put Band-Aids on this equipment. The decision to move from the loader to the mower was mine, I'll vouch that to anybody. But if I have roads that need to be mowed on the edge of the road, and I don't have a piece of equipment to do it, and something shows up that I feel, and most of my crew feels, and I'm sure there's a lot of townspeople that would feel the same way, to buy something to push back the purchase of a new one is a good decision. If anyone wants to argue that with me, give me a call, I have, I make my share mistakes, I get it. I'm doing the best that I can with the equipment that I've got. I've asked for stuff from different boards for several years, and I've been fortunate enough to get the smaller trucks, which we used in a great deal. But I mean, I was asking for a dump body for a truck, never showed up, never got put on the meeting, I had to take the body off and put the spreader on it, so I could get an inspection sticker. It's, it's older equipment, it's falling apart, what's done is done. What I wanna do is see what we can do with the best of our ability for the town to get the equipment that we kinda need to get through this season.
Barry, I didn't...
I noticed that there was a truck out salting this evening, how did that truck get loaded with salt?
With the backhoe.
So that's not an option for us to use the backhoe, rather than have a loader?
It is for loading the trucks, but if I need to plow snowdrifts or snow removal, it's still an option, but it takes twice as long and it's not nearly as efficient. I mean, it could be done, I can tell you right now, I'm not gonna be able to provide the services that I'd like to provide if we get a lot of snow in this town without a loader, unless I hire somebody out, which is gonna run into more money. So my train of thought is, rather than put the money towards hiring out or rental, we just buy, but that's me.
Well, but I, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to do to the board is have a Plan A and a Plan B, because if Plan A doesn't work, we need a Plan B. And the way I look at it is, if he has to hire out to get more labor, that's what snow and ice is for.
Okay, let me, let me ask you a question while, while you get the floor, Barry. In this memo that we, uh, Mr. Nardi provided, you made it very clear that this rat was only for the rental.
Correct.
It will not be granted to go towards the purchase of a new loader.
Correct. Because at the time, when Tom talked to us about rent with an option to buy, I did not know if legally we were allowed to do that without town meeting vote, because it's still a large piece of equipment, and even though you're renting with an option to buy, that may need to go to legal to make sure that you have to put that on the floor.
Because my first concern was, I, I would want exactly the opposite, or at least a vast majority.
But I don't know that that's...
I'm gonna pay this man to, listen, we're gonna rent it to you for four months, but then we're gonna buy it. I want a vast majority of that money going towards the purchase of that new, but if you...
If that's legal within the scope of the purchase and sale agreement, and with regard to legal, finding out whether or not we can do that pre-town meeting, I'm not sure that that's an option.
Yeah, I, I don't know, either, but you know, I think it's just...
It's a large purchase, it's not like it's under twenty-five grand, it's a large purchase.
But you know, we, we, we rent four thousand dollars for five months till, like you say, April, twenty thousand dollars, we're just gonna...
You're right, you're right.
Thank you very much, I mean, there has to be some sort of deal.
But we have to have some kind of service in place for the town. We need something. We can't leave him without an option to service the town.
Right.
But I did notice tonight that there was salt being put on the roads, and I thought, well, gee, he figured it out somehow to get the salt down tonight, so is there a way to use that system until we get to town meeting?
Well, I think, one, it's the first storm of the year, so I don't think they're gonna be plowing with that, you know, until, so, right, tonight, you have the availability of that machine because it's not on, on...
Right, it all depends on the storm.
There's no, there's no snow to push right now.
Right.
So it's gonna work great tonight, but you're gonna be back...
I wouldn't say great, but it'll work.
It'll, it'll be, you'll be back in the same position tomorrow, and then if we get another storm, and then another storm, it's...
I mean, there's been storms where the loader's been up on Coy Hill plowing, and the backhoe's been in the downtown pushing back the bankens because the vendors can't do it anymore with his pickup trucks because it's too much snow.
Because I know, you know, I was up, you know, I resided on Reynolds Road for eight or nine years, and that's, I know for a fact that when you get those nasty storms...
Yeah, I mean, you would have...
The trucks can't do it.
Just up the hill from your house was, is a classic example of snowdrifting. I mean, even last year, it was three feet of snow going across that road.
So is there an option, is there a contractor available that would wanna work, or we could use?
I could, I could possibly find a contractor to, to load trucks in snow removal, but as far as plowing, if we get a bad storm, I don't know what I'm really gonna do. I mean, I could try to plow with a bucket, but the road's so beat up, it can't, I can't plow with a bucket effectively. And I mean, it depends on the winter, last storm, I think the loader went out plowing two or three times up there, and that was it. But a couple of winters ago, there was snow, snowbankens up there that were almost ten feet tall on both sides of the road. All depends on the winter.
So, Tom, how long would it take you? I mean, I'm used to dealing with backs of figures, right? You have, you presented a couple of different things tonight, right? But we don't have really what the actual cost is going to be, I'd like to see what the rental cost would be, whether that's applied to the purchase price, you know, in writing, right? Not just hearsay. You know, what are our other options, are, are there other contractors out there available to help us out, so we can get this up and going? I don't think I have enough information really.
No, I need to make a knowledgeable decision tonight.
I mean, here it is, it could be this, it could be that, I need, I need some solid numbers before I commit to anything.
Because I, I will agree with Mr., Mr. Nardi, that we gotta stop buying used stuff.
Oh!
It's just, you know, it, it seems to work out great for the first year, and then all we did is buy somebody else's problems.
Yeah, it's, it's the way it works, depends on the piece of equipment, and you don't know until you purchase it. I mean, that truck that we bought used, I had some issues with it the first couple of storms, and it's been great since. That was, what year?
Would you say, sorry to interrupt, would you say you could get us concrete numbers before Monday?
Yeah.
We could repost our executive and just add that as a discussion, possible vote, to see what time provides us, because we can't vote tonight. Whether or not we can get a contractor, what the lease, rental, whatever the agreement would be to purchase on that new machine, I'm not, I'm not a don't-ree-used machine, I'm not, I'm don't-ree-used.
No, I don't, I'm...
If that's what we had to present to the town. Keep in mind, Plan, Option A is possibly going to the town on January seventeenth, so we need coverage for September and half of January, and we're already in our first snowstorm, so who knows how bad it's gonna get quick. It would be great if we could find a contractor, I think it would be far less than four thousand dollars if it's a, even if it's a twenty-four-hour day, the person has to work a couple hundred bucks an hour. I mean, still, I, I would like to try and get that option if we could, if it's a possibility, I think.
So how do we handle the, the, the snow, the loader needs to go out plowing?
For the contractor, again?
Mm-hmm.
We can, we can see if we can write that in the scope of what his services would be if you could consider it, I mean, it's a question to be asked to him, of that person, if they wouldn't mind doing that, when we pay contractors now, plow, put them on the rolls and say, hey, if it's bad enough, store, I need you, I, you know, we give us the option of having you go out and do this, and we'll pay the contractor's rate, and we'll come up with something. The board can come up with, with that and fund that, and I think finance would support that, possibly, probably a lesser expense to us than four thousand a month. Just to have the vehicle there, maybe use it, maybe not use it, possibly, the, the piece of machinery?
It's just the whole point that it doesn't have a plow on it, though, it's, I mean, I can ask them, it's just gonna take a lot longer to do it, that's all, and it won't come.
The plow's an attachment to the loader you have now, right?
Excuse me?
The plow attachment?
Right.
We still have...
But each, attachment is set up differently.
Gotcha.
Well, I think everybody's on board that, you know, something has to be done, but I think there's a little, to me, unanswered questions, because I am certainly not in favor of buying a new equipment.
No, I mean, I used one, it was, it's in, if it had less hours on it, I would certainly consider it, because...
I'm certainly not in favor of spending twenty thousand dollars and going like this and saying, okay, now we gotta go buy a new one, because that's not a viable option that I'm in favor of. So why don't you do what the...
Yeah, I know I, I know I have gotten...
Because like I said, you know, the, the finance committee, too, was under the impression it was twenty-five hundred dollars, and then, you know, the figure changed today, when you came in today, that's how I found out about it.
Right.
Twenty-five to four thousand.
Yeah, that's...
That's a big jump, you know?
Well, so we can use the emergency classification at the town meeting, and that decides in the end, I have an open, prior to our executive, Tom, you know, if you can come, you can, but make sure that Becky has everything that we need to go over. But it would be helpful if you could stop in there and discuss it with us, there's a good chance we might vote on that, so...
I know it's a little out of characteristic, but is there a possibility of getting access to my email on our computer now, 'cause I know it was sent to me on my email from that dealer?
Yeah, we're almost on the meetings.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're asking the wrong guy.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
So, we'll do Monday.
So I could probably have you the answer in a few minutes, if that's the case.
Have you had your hand up?
Yeah, um, at the finance committee meeting, um, Tom, we asked Tom to contact a vendor that he was planning to use to find out if he was even available, and he was supposed to get that information.
That vendor is, is possibly available, but it's...
And what months, and you also said that it could be less than twenty-five hundred a month.
Right, but it's not, that was confirmed with the email from the dealership, now that I told him it was gonna be more of a long-term rental, that's the way that the rental worked, so it's... I thought it would be twenty-five, I thought, I thought it, there was a possibility where it could be less because it was a longer term, but that's not the case.
Is he the only one you talked, I know you were looking at a couple of different machines.
Who's the vendor?
Cat.
What about the other machines you looked at?
They're all same, same way, like, I don't have any numbers from them, but I didn't, I didn't see it feasible to deal with another vendor that were, I'm not interested in purchasing that machine.
So you're locked into Cat now?
No, I'm not locked into Cat.
All I'm saying is, you could approach those other vendors and get quotes from them for the same purpose, the rental.
Just to get a quote, shop them against each other.
How much could it be applied?
If you really want Cat, you can turn around and say, hey, look, I got this deal on this one right here, what can you do for me? I want yours, but you're gonna have to lower your price a little, just to keep them honest, it would help us just to have some work, I think.
Barry? So with what you're suggesting for Monday, how will that be financed if you take a vote?
Well, you've already committed to a rat, if it was a lease, a rental-type lease deal, monthly, right? So he's got that commitment from finance, if that's the option that we have, because the contractor amount, I'm, you know, he can deficit spend snow and ice, but he has money for contractor services. We can replenish it in May or in January, if we had the money back into cover, if he added more contractors and expended that amount of money.
Well, he can take it out of snow and ice.
Correct, and it's the line he can deficit spend.
Right.
So we have options, it's just...
I'm just, because if we need to be there, we can be there, vote, and put it in as a rat, if that's what, the way you wanna go.
Well, I think we're gonna make a determination with on Monday, we'll make some kind of determination, I mean, I don't know if you guys have to be there to vote, but you're...
Well, we have to vote if it's a rat.
Right, I'm not saying it has to happen Monday, but within the next few... Right. I'm not saying it has to happen Monday, but within the next few days you would. So I mean, if you want.
Well, I don't know how fast he needs the pro, the, the equipment, that's all.
Probably as quick as possible.
The other, the other option that I checked into is I could use Chapter ninety money. But the only problem with that is it takes money away from road to bar.
All you're doing is taking it over here, using it here, and then we'll be whining because we, we share it over here in the spring.
You have, you have the highway equipment account, which is some of the money, the money that's been put in there is from the schools, correct?
Right.
We're gonna have auction money that's getting turned over to you. So there's about thirty-eight grand right there. So that could be transferred or reused at the special if we need to fund something for him. Those are, those amounts are there. So I'm not sure. We knew those amounts very enough, but.
As a matter of fact, when I was talking to somebody that had, that you had brought up, and I forgot all about it, that you have just under fifteen thousand dollars from the sale of your equipment.
Right.
And, and you know, this board has always, it came from the fire department, I think, has like thirty-two hundred dollars. That that is earmarked towards highway.
Right. You know, one of, one of the things that I wanted to.
It's in the free cash because we don't have a line at it for it. It is earmarked for highway. So we do have, it's like fourteen thousand, nine hundred bucks or something.
And that's just it. One of the things that I wanted to purchase was that, that I submitted to capital for FY twenty was a new small spreader. Well, I'm sure the spread is nice, it's that one I wanna replace. It's broken.
I'd like to just, I'm not against that, and just, I would like to concentrate on getting this thing fixed. Use whatever resources we can with minimal impact to the taxpayers. If we already have some money set aside and things, try to go that route there. And we'll address the other things through capital and, but there's just options. I was just pointing out, funding-wise, if, whatever we decide on Monday.
The reason that I bring up the rat is only because it's an extenuating circumstance. The money that's already in the equipment, like the fifteen that you're talking about, the thirty-seven you're talking about, it would be, I, I think the board, when we talked about it, felt that it was more prudent to use that money towards his new purchase with the help of capital rather than not use the funds that are there specifically for that end use. It's an unseen, it's an unseen, it's an unseen purchase, unforeseen purchase. He can use that money and not use up the money that he can use towards the new purchase of.
But if he uses it for the lease, and the lease amount of that lease goes towards the purchase, he is using it as a new purchase of the vehicle.
Then it's a moot point. Then it's a moot point.
So we have options.
We need to know more information.
Okay.
Yeah, Monday.
Okay, Tom.
Six thirty, we're gonna have a talk?
Will that part of your meeting be open?
Yeah.
Yes. And, and just while you're here, I was gonna mention it in, in the end of the meeting, but I just want to recognize the work that you guys did up on Sidey Road. Because if anybody had been up there, you know what, that hellhole it was up there. And people don't realize that. The only thing that they see is when that new rock asphalt goes down. But people don't realize the two months worth of work that yourself and your department did up there. Because I used to travel out of the road every day, and it was a mess. So who goes to, yourself and your guys up there, Sidey Road, I think you have a resident here that can testify to that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I thank you for that. I didn't.
Come out, come out very, very nicely.
I didn't have a ton of physical work to do with it myself up there, but this is, this is probably the best crew I've had since I've been here.
The, the road itself come out very nicely. Unfortunately, for whatever reason, everybody goes three times as fast on Sidey Road as they did before because if you didn't have that option, I don't think you could go twelve miles an hour on Sidey Road without beating up.
Well, you could if you wanted to lose your teeth.
I just wanted, before you left, I, I know you're gonna have a busy night, but I just want to recognize that your crew did the nice work up there.
Thank you. Thank you. And I mean, as far as going forward with the boards, I mean, I wanna do and work forward with the board. I'm still excited about how this capital plan is talking on purchasing for the future. And that's, we need to move forward versus dwell on things that have happened. And that's something, I mean, I've dwelled on some stuff. I've been submitting stuff the past six or seven years, and there's no money for purchasing. And I think that's changed with the new, new committee within capital planning. I'm excited about that. It's, you know, I could go on a little bit more with the conversation I had with the chairperson on my future and what I wanna do with different equipment and so forth, and try to reduce and consolidate and use more pieces year-round versus one at a time, but no, we don't. But I wanna move forward. This is an unfortunate thing that none of us was aware of. Yes, I knew the loader had issues.
We all did, but like I say, I think we were under the assumption that, that, you know.
Should've made it through this year.
Well, maybe till springtime, but unfortunately it didn't.
It's not.
Thank you very much for coming in, Tom.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, what time will that meeting be on Monday?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
All right, we have the police department staffing audit discussion. John, I'm gonna let you run with this.
Name in that.
It's thirty-five hundred dollars. And it's, and it's, you know, they range anyway, from that amount of money up to twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars.
Thirty-five hundred dollars, the audit is scheduled.
Staffing only. It's not a full department audit. It's not policies and procedures or anything like that. It's staffing only. It's about thirty-five to fifty hours or more.
You got something we could look for?
Well, one of the things is, I, I just want to make, both of you will be aware that we do have that one. But Becky has spent countless hours trying to get in touch with people, and nobody friends known. So this was basically the only response we got after probably thirty-five hours of phone calls and this and that. So it is what it is. So this, this company here, I don't, troll, is it troll?
Well, the company's out of book asset, but he's kind of informed to.
So he's, the only reply we had, and, you know, the copy of the resume was, was given to, to the board members. I just wanna know, I guess, one, who's paying for it? How are we paying for it?
We are.
Yeah, I think the select office.
We are. We initiated what we're paying for.
And I think it's, it's an unbiased look at what we're doing. And for thirty-five hundred dollars, I think it will answer a lot of questions. I think it meets chief's concerns about having a law enforcement agency look at it because they are all.
I, I don't know if you saw the resume, chief, but.
No, I, I have, I've had a chance to look through the packet. No, I think this is exactly what needs to be done. And I've got a list of all the documentation that this company will require. I'm ready to start putting it together. I'm eager to get started on this. He's gonna review, actually fifteen months, and make the presentation in writing. So I'm interested. And he's already done over a hundred different communities. So obviously, it's gonna meet the requirements that we talked about. And I'd like to start putting the paperwork together. Do you just need a vote of board?
I mean, the resume is pretty impressive. I wish it together. I had a chance to go through it. I think the cost is, it's value-added to the town, in my opinion. It'll help in a lot of aspects. It'll help a lot of discussions we have with regards to policing and budgeting and what the town actually needs and what the chief needs. So I'm in favor of it. And in the select board, we'll pay, we'll bear the cost of the, the audit because we initiated. It wouldn't come out of the police department budget. So I'm, I'll make a motion that we approve the audit. And I don't have the exact amount back, but thirty-five, thirty-five hundred dollars for the payroll audit, which goes back roughly eighteen months, I think.
Staffing.
Staffing.
Fifty, excuse me, it's fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen months. Staffing.
Second. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cool.
C and C, anybody?
I have one.
Comments and concerns?
Actually, I was approached by one of the neighborhood kids the other day. About to use the gym for playing basketball and stuff. I know we discussed it last meeting. But we didn't really make a decision on it. I just think we should open up the consideration. Look at all the problems that may arise, but also look at the, I mean, kids in town don't have a lot of places to go. We have a gym downstairs that kids would like to use to play basketball. To me, it's a good thing to get the kids off the street. I don't know what we require for chaperones or whatever, but I think we need to discuss it further. I'm in full support of having the public use of public buildings. We're available, so I just wanna keep that back up. Discussion doesn't have to be tonight. But I think we're in the season now. It'd be nice to get the kids off the street and get a place to get together and do something productive themselves, so.
Well, I, you know, that was one of my, my little items because, you know, since I sat on this board this time and the last time, I have been a very big advocate of, this is a taxpayer-funded building. Taxpayers in town support every nickel that's lost on this building. And I know in past years, there has been, I don't know how many countless sports teams come up here that set up doing the gym, plus the older adult basketball people like myself and this and that. I have no problem. I encourage the use, but again, this week, we had, one of your officers came up and the building was left unlocked. And that is, I think, this board's only concern. We encourage the use of the building, but, you know, somebody that has issues or whatever, if the building is left unlocked, they could literally trash this whole building in an hour. And this town could be literally out of business. They could smash this. That's my only concern. I want the people to take advantage of the opportunity that, that they have here. But unless there is some sort of a system where there's balance and checks that we know who's in here and not keys passed when one guy hit yellow, I'm not going to sit. That's been a problem in the past. And I think until we address that, that, you know, people have to feel comfortable. You wanna use the building? I can't have people running up and down the hallways and supervisors. I can't have people, well, I'll lock up and I'll lock, and everybody walks out of the building and the building is left unlocked. That is, like you say, I don't, I don't wanna go into the discussion tonight, but I encourage the use of it. But we have to have some responsibility. And I do not want somebody in here without some sort of adult supervisor. I do not want twenty, twenty high school juniors out in the building. I encourage it. The gym is for a purpose. You should really have no other business in any part of the building besides the bathrooms. But, you know, I mean, how many times have you come in and lights are on, and windows are left open, and the heat's cranking in the gym, and it's eighty-two degrees down there, and everybody hasn't been in there for four days? It's, it's a cost to the town that I encourage the use of the building, but there has to be some responsibility.
Agreed.
Comments and concerns?
Follow-up on John's comment. A week and a half into this new dispatching, how's it going? What's happening?
As far as I know, the two chiefs are here. We have had very little, if no bumps in the road.
Everything's been fine. We've had numerous meetings. There's been no, no hiccups, I don't know, major hiccups. Some little things that, you know, just fine-tuning radio frequencies and stuff like that. But there's been no, no issue there whatsoever. I'm aware. I've never had any residents approach me with any issues. And, you know, we've, we seem to be working very well with them, so. More aspect.
The only thing I've noticed with it is just a little learning curve on, more from my, more, more from my perspective, where they're more first responders than highway, except for tiny, of course. But it's just a learning curve on who to call and how to get in touch with people, but I think it's working good too.
The average person shouldn't, shouldn't notice a change. They really shouldn't. I mean, it's all the same numbers and everything. The only difference is it's a different person picking up the phone. But for, for all intents and purposes, everything that everyone has always done is, is exactly what they still need to continue to do. And, you know, they're still testing the sirens. They're still testing all the pages, you know, that, so I made sure that they, you know, they tested the sirens the first Sunday of the month, the same time, so that nobody was panicked about, you know, and, you know. So all that stuff has stayed the same. So people really shouldn't notice too much of a difference.
There you go.
Is there an update on the renewal of the police chief contract? Or is that still?
That's not a subject for discussion. Comments and concerns? Anybody else?
Chief.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just real quick. I had sent an email, or excuse me, I talked with Becky the other day, and Becky had sent out an email to the board asking for permission to, for me to contact town council. I hadn't received any replies back on that. I only ask because it's time-sensitive and we're here this evening. It's nothing bad. I'm just trying to reach out to, we're trying to start a, a kind of a, what I think is, is gonna be an excellent program, potentially up at Quabog, to, you know, actually do like a fire science lab with the, with the students up there. This would be an actual credited class and whatnot taught by us, which would gear up for, to get future recruits from there, as well as people into EMT classes and everything, and kind of look at things from a, a different recruiting standpoint, and kind of tap, you know, a resource that we, we haven't yet. And I think it'd be great. And it seems to be, it's a lot of positive response, but I, I need to reach out to town council. I have a meeting with the superintendent and the principal next Wednesday, so it's kind of time-sensitive. And I just need to know about liability and have that conversation to make sure the town isn't exposed to anything. So I'm just hoping that the board might be able to.
We don't have any issues there.
I apologize for not responding. I thought I had to respond if I had a problem with it, so.
I, I just didn't wanna overstep my bounds and reach out without an actual permission from the board to do so. That's all.
Yeah, I forgot. So, sorry. I apologize. I'm fine with it.
Go for it, Adam.
Okay, thank you.
In business, John.
Nothing on my end that I already, just here, I may have to say.
Mr. Nardi?
Real quickly, just an update on the survey, folks. We've gotten some responses. It's still on the website. Kind of shocked at the support we have for the town hall. I, I didn't think it was gonna be as great as it is. It's like ninety-eight percent are in favor of putting money into the town hall and continuing the maintenance and an upgrade. You know, as I reported, we didn't receive a grant for the windows. I met last week with members of historical, our town accountant, friends of the town hall. We still wanna move forward with trying to secure funding to add to the funding that's already been secured to do at least the first four windows. I'm adamant. I'd really like to get those done, at least to help out with the police department with the ventilation in the building and to continue to maintain where we brought the building with all the things we've done over the last few years. I don't wanna see it slip. So I will probably be presenting an article to the board to consider funding the window project or more maintenance within the town hall because it's getting depleted. And the second thing, real quickly, chief, is the town charter survey is kind of like a fifty-fifty right now. You know, we're gonna let it go to the end of the month. Like, plus two votes are in favor of the town charter. I actually had more people that were excited about serving on the committee, really. So we'll keep it up for a little while longer, see if we get some more results. I mean, it's something that we kind of gotta make a decision on by the end of this month and decide what we're gonna do so we can formulate a committee to bring it to the town in May, and then take another year to bring it to the registered voters for a vote if it passes in May. So there's a lot of work to be done, so I'm really probably gonna cut it off by the end of November and see where we are. But we have got responses. It's on the website. Please feel free to, you know, fill it out, send it in, tell us what you think, so we have an idea of what, you know, the pulse is with the town. Chief, got a question?
I just got a question. I know that the boiler company came down, and we did get a boiler inspection, but there were two areas on the boiler that were concerning, and they are concerned with the catastrophic failure of the boiler. I'm wondering if the, there's any discussion on that. I'm worried about having heat this winter.
No, but we should probably call somebody.
We did.
We did.
Put a Band-Aid on it.
It's a Band-Aid for now. I mean, we know that there's issues here and there for the boilers. Have we reached out to try and get quotes?
Not yet, no. We put a Band-Aid. He's, the, the repairman is hopeful that it's gonna get us through the winter, so. Something we're gonna have to discuss.
Should we send out for quotes, though? I mean, I'd rather be ready, at least with some numbers. And if there is a catastrophic failure.
Well, when I spoke with the, the serviceman, we've been dealing with this boiler now for a lot of years. And I know that the last time I had it repaired, it was a significant repair that took a couple of days. And it's the same area that they're concerned about, apparently. And I don't understand the whole logistical makeup of the boiler, but there's plates, and there's a significant amount of rust that's really bad. And he's afraid that if they go in and try and repair it, it's just gonna mushroom into.
Fall apart.
Yeah.
How old is the boiler now?
Well, it's, it's old.
When I was down there, it was old.
We changed, added, right?
Yes, the fire departments have all been upgraded, but theirs is original to.
It is a town building, and, I mean, we need to maintain it. And, I mean, we need to maintain it, it's really not the Chief's responsibility, so, I say we get a quota.
Yeah, we just get quotes. Yeah.
See what's in the cost.
Start coloring, see what the cost is.
Ballpark figure to see what's going on.
Maybe even change how we're fueling it, I don't know, you know?
It's already natural gas.
Yeah, but gas isn't cheap anymore, I mean, and I know it is, but, I don't know, check out our options.
Can't we just do the conversion?
We did that, but-
We have a dual burner-
Before the city was on gas, now gas is higher.
We have a dual burner and we have both feeds into the building, so a dual burner option.
We can use whatever is cheaper at the time.
I know when we convert to the natural gas, it was as easy as having the boiler cleaned and flipping a switch.
We're in gas now, we have a oil tank somewhere?
The oil tanks have all been removed, so that will be an issue also.
So, it's, we're locked into gas.
Yeah, those were old, we'd have to replace it probably anyways, even if we were to go back, they were old. So, we had them pumped and taken out. And we definitely wanna look at a couple of different options on that, or that just tie ourselves to gas, I think that's our, with some quotes.
That it?
That's it, we're done.
I just gotta, go ahead, Barry.
Can I just follow up with the window? Do we have a quote that's in stone?
Well, we have an old quote, we'd have to get it renewed right now, it was over a hundred, it was like a hundred and-
Was it one-twenty?
One-nineteen, yeah, something like that.
And then what is the available funding we have right now?
In the thirties, I think, we've been drawing from that for all the repairs, well-
The forty that we voted on?
No, that money is there, it's like thirty-nine and change, whatever it is, but there, because we use some of that money for some other, I don't remember exactly what Madeline's pullmate was for, for the window project, but we've had drawn from that. And we don't have an amount from Friends of the Town Hall, they're gonna commit something, but I can't tell you what that amount is until they take a vote, if they are willing to make a donation towards that, so, there's that. So I'm probably looking, do the window project, we're probably looking at, we need another eighty thousand. But we still wanna put some money into that, make the, the larger article that we're completing for other things that we've done there. We still need to address the, the dehumidifier, you know, we've got quotes on that, as to what we wanna do downstairs to maintain what we have. I mean, you toured it, it, it was pretty dry, and we don't wanna let it go, you know?
Twenty-eight thousand plus.
But, we have to bite the bullet at some point in time, otherwise we let it go and then it becomes a bigger cost. And, you know, I, when I first got into this board, I was advocating for police and fire safety complex, trying to secure land. It's not in the cards for probably five to ten years. In the meantime, we're still having issues with windows, ventilation and things down there. For a small amount of money to secure the building a little bit better and to create better ventilation and to help the building breathe and the officers breathe correctly, I think it's well worth it. You know, for now, until we figure out what we're gonna do down the road and we repurpose the building and we get the ADA compliance, before I forget, Chief, I gotta ask you a question. I was asked at the meeting the other day, the buzzer for ADA, Mrs. Buck had mentioned that it's not working now. There was a buzzer outside or something, and what does this, does it work? Because she said it wasn't, and I said, well, I'd ask the chief about this.
Yeah, bring some dispatch.
Okay, I will relay that to her, thank you. So yes, that's it.
I got a couple of quick things, just a quick reminder that, speaking of refurbishing at Town Hall, the Friends of Town Hall still have their pie sales going, and I did check today, and I guess you still have a couple more days to place your orders in. Just a reminder to all the citizens of Warren, that the tree lighting ceremony is Thanksgiving weekend, that's Sunday from one to six, downtown Warren. And I know one of our people that is here just about every week is a young lady from the rear of the news, Colleen. And she reports on all these articles, and some of them aren't very pleasant or very flattering, but I just wanted to note that in last week's, or two weeks ago, paper that you did, a very nice story on Halloween up at the elementary school, and a very nice story on the Polish plate fundraiser that was held down at Senior Center, and I just wanted to say thank you very much. Nice to see good news in the paper once in a while. We don't have a specific date for our next meeting, besides Monday, which, you know, we've heard the conversation there, and other than that, I agree with you.
The only thing I'm gonna bring up is Tuesday, November twenty-seventh, at six-thirty PM in this room, DOT has been held in a public hearing, it's to discuss the, the project, anticipated project on the superstructure of the bridge at, well, in between Town Pizza and, or Georges and the fire station.
So there's gonna be work coming up this construction season, and it just, I don't think they can close the bridge, so it'll always be one, one lane open, but it's just an informational meeting that, you know, people that have interest in that are quite welcome to, to come on the twenty-seventh. Anything else there, Rebecca?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving, we're all gonna see you, so enjoy your holidays with your loved ones, be safe.
And I need a motion to adjourn.
So, Gregor?
End of votes.